Good evening. I'd like to call the order, the Kaiser City Council in special session for Monday, July, June 12th. Wow, I'm jumping ahead. I'm wishing for summer 2017. City Recorder, please call the roll.
Counsel Ryan?
Here.
Counsel Freeman?
Here.
Counsel Reed?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Counsel President Parsons?
Here.
Counsel Herrera?
Here.
And Counsel Anderson?
Here.
Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First off, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight for a very important discussion, conversation in our community about public safety services. But before we get into that portion of the evening, we do have a special presentation, and this would be for our K-9 Services Chief. I'd like to turn it over to you to introduce Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, City Manager, Counselors, and viewers on TV, and people in the audience. Today, I believe it's the day Jeff Coons talked to Jim Smith, who lives on 14th Street. He's here to give testimony a little bit later, but also said he wanted to give a donation to our K-9 program, and I thought we'd just call that out to a special time here in the front of the program. And Mr. Smith, would you go ahead and step up to the microphone real quick if you want to make a couple of statements, and then we'll make the presentation.
Thank you. I'm Jim Smith. I live in Kaiser, and I'm a resident of Kaiser also. First of all, I'd like to present my donation, my wife and I, to the Kaiser Police Department for the K-9 program, and I will give this check to Chief of Police. As being a citizen of Kaiser, and I'm here to support the funding for the new officers and everything that's involved, this is long overdue. We can't continue to work with a budget of 2008 and 2009 being frozen. This is 2017. Along with that, I'm a past five-year member of the Kaiser Police Department's Community Policing. I have done a lot. I have seen the vision, how short the officers are, the staff. Just to give you a little bit of description of what I did do as my time, I helped with administrative services in the office. I was trained and certified to use the radar car for traffic and take down the license number of the violators, of course. And I also was asked by the chief at that time to interview new hires for police officers. I have done numerous ride-alongs, and let me tell you, I can tell you one night in particular, I worked eight to 10-hour shift with the officer because they were shorthanded. When there's a crime scene involved, you apprehend the suspect, he goes to Gray Bar Hotel, that's my joke about it, and it stretches it thin. You've got calls for service, one after another. It becomes very tight. I also was invited to go along in my own time with an officer to Dallas to investigate a crime scene. I enjoyed every minute of it, and I have no regrets of what I did. I'm very proud of my time and service that I did for volunteer. Also, I'd like to mention, if you read the Kaiser Times, there was an incident article in the Kaiser Times on 14th Avenue Northeast. I live in that area. I observed, I saw a lot of illegal activity, suspicious activity. I contacted Deputy Chief Jeff Coons. We worked together on this. I gave him all the information I had, and then CRU got involved. That's when it went down. The people were evicted, and there were some arrests made. So all I can say, I want to reiterate, I want to see the council approve this funding. I think it's very necessary, and I appreciate, and thank you for your time.
So before we let you get away, we'd like to go ahead and make the presentation for the K-9 program to Chief Teague, and sir, we are very grateful for your very generous donation. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Smith got us going with tonight's conversation. Before we take more public testimony from people, I would like to go ahead and get some background information, so we are all kind of starting on the same page. We've all, I hope, have seen the informational flyer that has been put out. I see Ms. Bradley is holding it up right now, that many people have seen with the proposal for our police staffing, not only the number of police, but the actual functions. And I think that was a really good, in-depth analysis of our service, our level of service, and our needs. So, City Manager, I'd like to turn it over to you for the background information.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'm going to ask Chief Teague to kind of talk it up a little bit and sort of explain your background with Kaiser Police Department, and, you know, sort of from the beginning, and what this plan gets us.
Madam Mayor, do you mind if I do that from right here?
Not at all.
Okay, very good.
I think the camera's got you just fine.
Very good. I took the liberty of composing about 12 to 14 minutes of a statement, because I want to give a broader perspective of our philosophy of policing in Kaiser, not just the present need. There's a lot of folks that are watching tonight that haven't heard our philosophy, and I think it would be instructive for them to learn that. I think it's good for Kaiser. We've already seen good benefits of it, so if you'll indulge me for, let's hope it's about 13 minutes. I've told you many times that Kaiser's a very safe place to live, and I've also told you that you're safer today in Kaiser, really almost anywhere in the United States than you were 20 years ago. The high point for crime in Kaiser was in the mid-'90s. Juvenile crime is a significant, unignorable problem across the country. Researchers advised then that America is now home to thickening ranks of juvenile superpredators, radically impulsive, brutally remorseless youngsters, including evermore pre-teenage boys who murder, assault, rape, rob, burglarize, deal deadly drugs, join gun-toting gangs, and create serious communal disorders. Kaiser wasn't immune to these problems or to this prognosis. At core, the researchers added, the problem is that most inner-city children grow up surrounded by teenagers and adults who are themselves deviant, delinquent, or criminal. We know that children often reflect the risk and protective factors that surround them. We know, for example, that an intact family is a protective factor, and we know that delinquent friends is a risk factor. That's true, by the way, for adults, too. But we also know that most people who live in high-risk neighborhoods aren't themselves high-risk. Even the worst neighborhoods are comprised of mostly good people trying to live good lives. No one knows why crime peaked in the '90s. The decrease in crime has been attributed to a myriad of causes, less lead in the environment, for example, a better economy, incarceration, broken windows policing, and so on. Simply put, no one knows, but we do know that better policing made and makes a considerable contribution. In the '80s and '90s, South Kaiser suffered from a lot of crime, a lot. The Police Department had an active community policing program in southeast Kaiser, and the city put a lot of time and resources into improving Plymouth Drive and Cherry Avenue. These days, we seldom respond to Plymouth Drive, and southeast Kaiser is as safely walkable as West Kaiser was and is. I think no small part of that are the improvements to the area, including the building of new schools. I mentioned community policing as a correlate, but it's only that, a correlate. In contrast, the research shows that community policing does very little to prevent crime from happening. That's probably because the people with whom we're developing relationships under community policing aren't the people who are otherwise committing crimes. Problem-oriented policing, however, is proven to prevent crime. Situational crime prevention, crime prevention through environmental design, place-based policing, data-driven policing, data-driven policing through traffic safety, all of these are modern, problem-oriented policing methods. We used to think that 80% of the crime was committed by 20% of the people. Then it became 90/10. It's true that there are gains when we focus upon high-crime people, but there shouldn't be anything arbitrary about that. A proper focus on a high-crime person should be data-driven. We use data to identify who the frequent flyers are, and we focus upon them, frequently visiting with them to let them know that we're focusing on them. That works, but there aren't many high-crime people in Kaiser. Certainly, we can name a few at almost any given time, but we pay attention to them, and they change, they move, or they go to jail. A more common approach is place-based policing. We identify high-crime places by the data or by reports from neighbors. This is how we discover the squatter houses we've been dealing with and that I've told you about. You may recall that communities were struggling to figure out how to handle these foreclosed homes into which squatters had moved. Most apartments had simply walked away from them, considering them to be civil problems between the banks and the squatters. We consider them neighborhood problems, and if you live near one, you know what I mean. Our street crimes unit aptly called the Community Response Unit focused upon these, or focuses upon these and other high-crime places, solving the underlying problems, thus preventing crime, and returning the neighborhoods to their pleasant, normal states. We need the Community Response Unit. We call it CREW. It's that unit between patrol and detectives that focuses on persistent community livability problems. Generally speaking, patrol officers serve their radios. When they finish one call, they're on to the next. Detectives, on the other hand, are in it for the long haul, and frankly, they serve their desks. Detectives dive deep, and it's not uncommon for a detective's report to run more than 100 pages of single-spaced text. You may recall that we stopped writing reports on many of our police calls. Those were calls that were handled and didn't need detailed reports. An example is a neighbor complaining about another neighbor's loud music. We'll handle the problem, make a few notes, and be on our way. The data is still there, but it's rudimentary. We freed up up to 90 minutes per day, per officer, and they're able to spend more time looking for root problems, cultivating relationships, and helping other units or our crime analysts. Earlier, I mentioned good people living in not-so-good neighborhoods. You know, when a cop shows up at one of their doors, that ought to be a good thing. Help has arrived. But for decades, the only tool in our toolbox was to arrest. The answer to crime problems was to overwhelm the problem with cops and take people to jail. We've already noted that there are costs of such a single-minded approach, including fiscal, emotional, and other costs to the perpetrators' families and neighborhoods, not to mention the cost to the victims. Remember those inner-city children raised among ne'er-do-wells? The consequence of arrest as the only answer has been whole neighborhoods where every adult male has been in jail or prison, and no adult male has a job. The same superpredators researcher later said, "If I knew then what I know now, I would have shouted for prevention of crimes." That's because we now know that people aren't predetermined to commit crimes, and we know that if we interfere with the crime cycle, we can prevent crime from happening in the first place without simply causing it to move elsewhere. If you think about it, we cops should first be about preventing crime, not simply waiting for it to happen, to be investigated afterwards. I'll punctuate that by noting that there is nothing we cops do that is more noble than preventing crime from happening. It's better for everyone, for the people who won't be victims or perpetrators, for their families, for their neighborhoods and communities, and for us taxpayers. So what about Kaiser PD staffing? We have fewer cops today than we've had in almost 10 years. In 2008, we had 41 police officers, including a third school resource officer, a second traffic officer, and additional officer on each night shift. Of particular importance is that we've had the same number of detectives for 20 years, but today, one of them is consumed with forensics of electronic data, so effectively, we have one fewer detective. Today, we have 37 police officers. We also have less crime, including about half as much Part 1 crime. So my request for five more police officers isn't about the sky falling. It's about sustaining a good thing and allowing us to meet community expectations. I think I speak for every person in Kaiser when I say I want a cop in my rearview mirror or at my front door to be a good thing. Even if a cop is existentially a proof of bad news, I want to know that the cop at my door investigating my case or investigating me has a problem-oriented perspective, that he or she sees the bigger picture, knows that arrests and citations sometimes add to problems rather than solve them, and that the agency has the resources to help solve the problem fairly and justly. Most people will never have contact with an officer as a victim of a crime, but if they do call us, they have an expectation that we'll do something. Even if most realize that some crimes simply aren't solvable, they surely expect us to do something. Today, too often, only with property crimes, thankfully, too often investigations grow stale because we simply don't have the resources. You might say, "Well, you did fine when the crime rate was higher." Actually, we do real well with solving person crimes, but we've steadily, every year, lagged with property crimes. People should expect us to work their complaints, and we want to. What I'm asking for is an extension of services. We have an infographic and an accompanying detail page that we've distributed widely. It details where we'll put those five cops, one on each of the two night shifts, one to traffic, giving us two, one to CREW, bringing that unit up to full staffing, and one to detectives as a full-time property investigator, something we've never had. I also want you to know that we squeeze what we can out of current resources. I've already said that we try to prevent crime from happening in the first place. There's a mobile home park in Kaiser which we used to respond to regularly. We've worked with the residents and managers, and now rarely go there. Things like that add up to needing fewer cops. We also have Marion County parole and probation housed in our office. That means we know who many of the high-risk offenders are, and we have instant access to their probation officer, letting us help him, help them, stay straight. And we have DHS workers among us. I'm told we're the only department in the state that has DHS in-house. We've only had that for about a year, but I'm told the benefits are legion. Patrol loves it, the detectives, school resource officers, and CREW love it, and more importantly, the families served by us in DHS love it because our work with DHS is now rather seamless, so both agencies can focus on family needs and not our agencies. Our agency mission is to help the community maintain order while promoting safety and freedom and building public confidence. Wrapping up, let me break that down. We help the community maintain order. You want order in your neighborhoods, schools, stores, places of business and streets, and when you call us, you expect us to help maintain that order. Our primary purpose at Kaiser PD is not the regulation of you or your neighbor's behavior, it's to help maintain order in the least intrusive manner possible, to maintain order while promoting safety and freedom. Our job is public safety, but we use wisdom in our application of the law. We look first to prevention, and if the means to prevention is a citation or arrest, we will do that. That is not where we go first. To maintain order while building public confidence, we want to retain the faith and trust you've put in us. We have good encouraging relationships with the people of Kaiser. Part of retaining that is problem-oriented policing, but part of that is also having the resources to meet those expectations. Kaiser is a very safe place. You even feel safe, and we want to keep it that way. Our bottom line is to prevent crime from happening in the first place, so you don't even have to think about it. And we think the five officers we've asked for will help us do that as far into the future as we can see. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. Counsel, does anybody have questions for the chief before we start hearing from the people who have come to be with us this evening? All right. So I have some people signed up, but I will be, if you didn't get a chance to sign up, we will be asking, is there a sheet in the back for people who have come in later? So if you didn't get a chance to sign up, and you do want to sign up for testimony, there is a sheet at the back, and you're welcome to add your name to the list. But it is not required, you don't have to sign in.
Actually, before we go there, Chief, I know that the Police Department put together a Facebook survey, sort of one question, "Do you or don't you want this?" Will you explain the results of that, and also what "this" is? What exactly are we asking?
Yeah, I may have to defer what the "this" is. I think I'll defer that to Tim Wood.
Nope, microphone.
I think I'll defer the "this," the ask, to Tim. Let me tell you about the survey, and why we took the survey. We're here today, June 12th, because there was some momentum around the parks, parks conversation, and Counsel wanted to conflate those two conversations. Initially, we had anticipated having the run of the summer with the Neighborhood Watch Groups, and especially National Night Out to hit a whole bunch of people, and then a forum in an open house in the fall before coming to you with this, and that got moved up to today, June 12th. So we thought, well, how do we, how do we gauge, clearly not scientifically at all, but how do we gauge the public sentiment? We did that by a few means, asking for emails both to us and to the mayor, putting a poll on the Facebook, a Facebook page, where we know not everyone who likes us really likes us on our Facebook, on our Facebook page. So on the Facebook, well, back up. So in the emails, we were, and I have another batch that was just given to me earlier, but we had 12 support, we had a poll online on the website, 12 in support, two noes there. We had five emails in support. I'm not sure what the mayor received. On our Facebook survey, we had about 400 and, well, 458 votes as of probably mid-afternoon. Those votes were 399 or 87.1 in favor, and 59 votes opposed. The question, and this will be my segue to Tim, the question we asked was, "Given the information in the infographic previously posted," and that was this infographic, "Given the information in the infographic previously posted, do you support adding five police officers at a cost of 12 cents per day, per household and business?" 87% in favor, 13% opposed.
So the "this" or the "that" that the chief referred to is what? Mr. Wood?
Well, the "this" that we're talking about today is sufficient funding to support those five officers, including a little bit of their startup costs, ongoing equipment, that kind of thing, on a per-annual basis. The current ask is $4 per month, per household and commercial utility account. So that equates to about $660,000 per year, and that would be sufficient to support the five officers on an ongoing basis. And as the chief has indicated, when we break that down, it equates to about 12 cents per household per year, or per day.
Okay. So that was the ask, and that was the information that was on the infographic that I presume most of the people who are here saw, and that was widely distributed throughout the community as well. And I also want to give a shout-out to the Kaiser Times for doing a great job making sure the information also got out through the community, through the newspaper, and their online as well. So there's been a lot of interest, a lot of sharing, and some discussion as well, but we want to hear from you tonight. And I would like to offer courtesy to our state representative, Bill Post, who is here, if he would like to add anything to the conversation at this time. Okay. Thumbs up. All right.
Let the record show.
Let the record show. All right. Okay, well, I appreciate you being here and being part of our community conversation, Representative. I also wanted to extend courtesy and also recognition for our former police chief, Mark Adams, is here tonight. We're glad to have you with us, and also former city counselor Mark Callier, and our current fire chief, Jeff Cowan. So thank you for being here tonight, as well as part of this conversation. Yes, well, right now, we're all going, "Yay, Beavers in the World Series," but anyway. All right. And with that, so I'll start down the list here. You will have five minutes, and it's your turn to talk, our turn to listen. If you have specific questions that were not addressed in the infographic, we'll try to kind of gather those up for our conversation as we wrap up your input on this conversation. Mr. Smith, you're at the top of the list. Is there anything you wanted to add to your comments from earlier? And if you do, come on down to the microphones so people at home can hear you.
I'm very enthusiastic about this offer, Tim. I did vote on Facebook, by the way, and I voted positive. I've sent emails to the people I know at Kaiser Police Department. I support this 100%. And like I said, I said before, we need to stand behind Kaiser Police. I lived here all my life. I see what goes on in Portland and Troutdale. My daughter lives up there. She talks to me about the crimes that goes on up there. When I was with the community policing, I was in District 3. So basically, what we did, we concentrated on District 3. It's all changed now. I'm not involved in that anymore. But we were, at that same time, trying to improve everything because of the shortage of staff. I also was on a committee, which I just happen to remember, for city ordinances. At that time, Mr. Johnson was the city attorney, which he still is. We worked on a lot of ordinances, truancy, all kinds of things, and we proposed all these through the chief, and then it went before the council, I guess, and the city attorney at that time, the chain of command, to try and prove all these things. There has been a lot done since I was involved from '94 to '99, and things have changed drastically. I've seen a lot of crime in Kaiser, and it really upsets me, and it really bothers me, but I want to commend Kaiser Police and all the detectives for trying to get to the bottom of it. We've had some murders, we've had some shootings in a Buy Mart. I missed that by five minutes. Scary situation for me, and I don't like to see this going on, but things happen, like the chief said. We have a lot of criminals out there. They don't care. They'll break in your houses, walls, look at you. They'll try anything. I have learned, I'm 73 years old, and I have learned to observe as to what goes on around me, especially my surroundings, and not everybody does that. But we have to protect ourselves, and at least it's good to know that Kaiser Police is there if we need them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, I have Mark Adams, and on deck, I have Ron Freshour. And if you just say, state your name and city of residence for the record.
All right. I'm Mark Adams. I'm a resident of Kaiser. Madam Mayor, Counsel, I'm here tonight to testify in support of funding additional police officers for the Kaiser Police Department. As you mentioned, I served as the chief of police for the City of Kaiser from 1997 to 2013, and during my tenure as the chief of police, adequate staffing of the KPD was a continuous issue every year. Population of the city continued to grow, new neighborhoods that weren't even here grew in, big commercial development occurred, and how to fund the needed number of police officers was an annual debate for the Budget Committee. Always support, never a way to fund. In approximately 2007, I conducted an allocation and deployment study for the Police Department, trying to find a more scientific way of deciding how many officers we needed besides the national officer per thousand studies that always came out. The study took into consideration three years of statistics for the Kaiser Police Department, the number of FBI-identified type 1, 2, and 3 crimes reported, the average time it took to complete investigation of each of these crimes, the average number of officers needed to handle each reported crime, and the number of hours of vacations, sick leave, compensatory time taken off by the officers for that same three-year period. And using formulas established by the Department of Justice, I determined that a minimum staffing level recommended for the KPD was 45 police officers. This is back in 2007. It is worth noting, though, that the study did not include the time officers spent doing the things that Chief Teague just talked about, the non-crime things, the livability issues, the crime prevention. And by 2008, we had 41 police officers. Then Chief Teague left and went to Dallas as the chief of police, took us down to 40, position was frozen. Three more police officers left for bigger police agencies. Those positions were frozen, leaving the Police Department with 37 police officers. Four years after my retirement, the four frozen police officer positions are still vacant, still frozen. I can say it's failing to adequately staff the Police Department puts our citizens at higher risk, and it also puts our police officers at higher risk. And that concludes my statement.
Thank you, Chief. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Freshour, and then on deck, we have Jeanne White.
Good evening.
And your city of residence for the record, please.
My name is Ron Freshour. I live in Kaiser on Megan Lee Lane. And Madam Mayor and Counsel, I just wanted to come and make sure that everyone knew that I was in favor of this. I'm captain retired from the Marion County Sheriff's Office, and I used to patrol Kaiser back before it became a city. So I have a little history here, and now I live in Kaiser, and I am totally in support of adding the police officers that you need. I'm fighting allergies, I think, like 50% of the Argonians, so a little voice shaken Back when I was with the Sheriff's Department, I had the privilege of going to England and studying for a short period of time with one of the police departments there on community policing, so that I could bring that back, and because they've been doing community policing for many, many years, and hearing Chief Teague's report tonight about prevention and how they are working with the community to prevent the crime, to work, to solve the issues before they become too big, is a fantastic way to do community policing or policing a period. And adding the five more police officers would definitely work in the prevention. Just the presence of police officers has an effect on preventing crime, and I would love to have my city more safe, and so I just want to vote for this and encourage you to add the five police officers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? All right. Thank you so much. Jeanne White, and then on deck is Ken Girloff.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Jeanne White. I'm a proud and very contented resident of Kaiser for the past 27 years. I'm a retired public school educator and administrator, spent 44 years doing that, and I'm now a real estate broker. and I'm now a real estate broker. This past week, as I drove up and down River Road, the first inkling of this came to my light as I noticed all the reader boards that said there would be this meeting. I then read it in the Kaiser Times and saw it in my church bulletin, and felt absolutely compelled to spend 35 seconds with you to say, "I wholeheartedly support this." I have not had a lot of need for the direct services of the police department, but this last week, I did. I had suspicious activity in my neighborhood. I called and had the same experience I have had the few other times I've needed to call. I have found our police officers to be highly responsive, very professional, tremendous follow-through, and very comforting to me in the issue that I've been concerned about. And because of that, and now even more so, having heard what you've shared this evening, I simply felt terribly compelled to share with you how much I support this very modest request.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you. Ken Girloff, and on deck would be Mike DeBlossy. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Just state your name and city of residence for the record, please.
Ken Girloff, Southeast Kaiser, Madam Mayor, council, chief, and staff. I'm here wearing two hats today. First is the President of Secana. We had a discussion about this issue, where we'd like to support both the parks effort and the police department. We feel that public safety has to take the front seat. If push comes to shove, that public safety absolutely has to take forefront. But we'd like to support parks, too. I think both are wonderful ideas, but priorities. And take that hat off, and I've become a private citizen here, and I go way back with John Teague, back to Southeast Kaiser in the Wild West days, and back to the mayor when we were writing ordinances, and we met you over the daytime curfew ordinance, I believe, was the first meeting, I think, when I met you. And so we have quite a history. And I think Chief Teague has done a wonderful job of stretching our resources to a very fine point. But I think we've reached the tensile strength of that line, and I think we're at a need to add the officers at this time. I think it's imperative. I'd like to see the detectives have some time to actually work on property cases. There are other cases other than sex crimes, and the stuff that's on a computer screen that's kind of takes a lot of time. So, yeah, I'm here to support. The neighborhood wishes to support, and I'll keep it brief with that.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions? All right. Thank you so much. Mike DeBlossy is up, and on deck is Gary Whalen, former city councillor.
Mike DeBlossy, resident of Kaiser. Good evening, Madam Mayor, councillors and staff. I come here tonight not to oppose the funding of the proposal for the police department. I support it, and I think Kaiser doesn't have enough law enforcement resources. But what I want to talk about is why Kaiser must continue to ask its residents for money above and beyond property taxes, whether for police or parks. To be sure, I think our property taxes are too low, and they need to be raised. But low property taxes isn't the only reason for the shortfall. Since before our city was incorporated, Kaiser, like so many places in the country, focused on how to move and park cars efficiently. And the result is auto-centric development that depresses our tax values. Just focusing on River Road, approximately 50 percent of the land base is occupied by parking, and this has reduced our tax base by at least 50 percent. And I say "at least" because if you look at the opportunities lost by the development, it's probably more than 50 percent. And the ideological bias against raising property taxes and compact development must give way to the fundamentals of math. We can't allow residents who don't want to change the character of their neighborhood or are fundamentally opposed to taxes to control the success or failure of our city, unless they want to have their property taxes raised two to three times. Raising the taxes in traditional compact development are the only hope we have to, without the need to raising our, drastically raising our taxes. So I say that we can and should approve the fee, but unless we deal with that fundamental problem, we're only kicking the can down the road. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. DeBlossy? All right. Thank you very much. Next up, Gary Whalen, and on deck, we have Rhonda Rich.
My name's Gary Whalen. I'm a Kaiser resident, Madam Mayor, council. Thank you for the time to be here. Chief Teague's overview was very factual, focused, and I think it really highlighted how he and his entire department function with our best interest in safety as primary focus, and I really appreciate that very much. I support a proposed fee for the police services, and I believe this will benefit the community's safety and services, as well as, and certainly equally as important for the officers themselves. We put a lot of responsibility on them, and we need to give them the resources that they feel safe and secure to perform their sometimes dangerous duties. This fee, as well as the proposed parks fee, will impact residential and business budgets by, oh, $8 to $16 per month. We don't know what it is yet, because we haven't seen the final parks proposal, which I understand is being worked on. The citizens, and all of you are, are the only revenue source and deserve to know what the combined cost will be. We have a number of residents on fixed incomes, as well as tenants and landlords who will be directly affected. The homeowner and tenants need to know what their housing cost will be. The landlords need to notify the tenants of the new rents, if, and many will, pass that on to their tenants. If the fees are implemented either by citizen vote or council enacting an ordinance, there should be a 90-day lead time, so the individuals can reorganize the family budgets, and landlords can comply with the requirements of the Oregon Landlord Tenet Act. There is a need for these fees, and again, I strongly support it. And I can, but it would be easier to be more supportive if I can see all the specifics to truly make an informed decision. And I think you, as councillors, if the citizens don't get to vote on it before, you can make an informed decision. You have to have the data for both parks and police and prioritize, so everybody's making an informed decision. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Whalen? Thank you so much. Rhonda Rich is up, and on deck, we have Matt Lawyer.
I'm Rhonda Rich, resident of Kaiser. Good evening to you all. First of all, I'd just like to say I do support the funding for the police department. I think a lot of Chief Teague's experience and knowledge, he's been to several of our Neighborhood Association meetings, and we always feel comfortable in speaking with the chief and knowing that we have a good police department. I consider the police kind of right up there with the fire department personally. I mean, I depend on both of them. If I need either one...
We got to Todd here.
If I need either one, I want to know that somebody's going to be there, and as soon as I need them. So I just want to mention, I did also come to the parks fee meeting, and there were about half a dozen people I knew at the meeting. And afterwards, I left them, they didn't speak afterwards. I, a couple of them were neighbors, went over there and talked to them and said, gee, you know, why didn't you speak? And they felt that it was already decided that there was going to be a fee, and why say anything about it? And everybody felt that there should be some voice, that the residents would have as far as an election. So I just wanted to pass that on, although we have a roomful here, probably 99 percent supportive of the police department, that I think it would be wise, on parks and police, that since this doesn't seem to be an emergency situation, I mean, we've, you know, sadly gone along with many years with not having adequate police in the, in department. But I know it was mentioned at the parks fee meeting, that in March, you could have an election that wouldn't cost the citizens any tax money. And so I would think it would be wise, you've done a good job in getting the information out there. I think, I think you'd be surprised, I'm sure the police would be supportive, I'm not going to bet on it, but, but I think that would, you know, I think the citizens should be allowed to have a vote and have a say. I think, I know I've come to these meetings, and I feel fairly comfortable, I know a lot of you, and to speak with you, but I know that there's a lot of people out there who just, you know, if they come forward and say, "Well, I don't know about this," or "I would like some more information," or "I don't agree," they don't feel comfortable to come to a city council meeting. So I think it would be prudent to wait till March, you know, get some more support out there, more information, because I think, right now, we just kind of touch the surface. And although you've done a good job in informing us, but anyway. And also, if you, if you do decide to pass a fee, I think it might be wise to sunset that fee in two or three years, or take a look at it, to revisit it. So that's, that's my personal opinion. I want to say, on the Neighborhood Association side, too, Eric Bandonis, who's a parole and probation officer, comes to our meetings quarterly. He's housed here at the Kaiser Police Station. He's, we just feel so privileged to be able to have some representative from the police department come to our meetings, too. And I do feel safe in Kaiser, so, thank you.
Rhonda, just one real quick thing, and Tracy, you'll want to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the general elections where the city wouldn't have to pay to hold an election is the November of even years, not March. So it would actually be a year and a half out.
Okay.
Excuse me, Chris. It would be May and November of 2018.
Yeah, okay. There you go.
Oh, May, okay.
So that would push out any sort of decision-making on this, to push out another year, another budget cycle, before we could actually enact fees or any other funding mechanism?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Any further questions for Ms. Rich? All right. Thank you very much. Matt Lawyer. And then, I don't have anybody else signed up, so we'll check the list to see if anybody else has signed up, or I will just ask for people to put their hands up in the audience. Mr. Lawyer.
Madam Mayor, members of the council staff, good evening. Matt Lawyer, Kaiser resident. And that's why I'm here, because I came back to Kaiser after almost a decade in the military. And I came back to Kaiser because it was a safe city, a city that I wanted to raise my kids in. I have profound respect for police. I spent three and a half months as an auxiliary police officer in the United States Navy, of which I probably saw more calls than I care to remember, between suicides, attempted murders, and other things. It's not memories that I really want to have, but it was part of something that was critical to the safety of the base I was stationed on at the time. The work done by Kaiser Police is often unseen, but is plain as day, as you go through this city and see just how safe it is. The response times are quick. The biggest issue I have is almost getting in a car accident every single morning on the way to work, because people treat River Road like the Autobahn. And I'm glad that chief has a plan to get that slowed down. The people of Kaiser do have a voice. There are the seven individuals sitting in front of us right now. They elected you to be the representative body of the people sitting behind me and myself, and everybody else that didn't show up tonight. You have the ability, within your purview as councillors, to make these choices by those people that elected you. And if this is a decision on whether or not you may or may not get elected moving forward, then that's something that you have to sleep with at night. But those are the decisions being made. Elections have consequences. You're a representative body of the people of Kaiser, so I'd encourage you to take this very seriously. I respect the need to have that voice, but that's why you're all are here. I think, moving forward, Kaiser's going to continue to be a safe place, but we're at a position now, because of Measure 50, which passed on May 20th, 1997, which handcuffed cities and municipalities from being able to increase their property taxes. The net benefit of that is Kaiser's a very cheap place to live. The downside of that is it makes business really, really hard, and the city is constantly having to do so much with so little. We have some of the best services in the entire state for very little money. It is unsatisfactory, in my opinion, that a city of almost 40,000 people have less police officers than Albany, who has more people, Woodburn, who has more people, and the Port of Portland has more police officers than the City of Kaiser. In my opinion, that is not good for public safety. It's not good for looking forward, because if we continue to tie the chief's hands and not get him the resources he needs, we're going to start seeing more and more issues with homeless people in this city, and we're going to start seeing increases in crime as the city continues to grow. So I would encourage the council to take a look at that, and highly support the efforts by Chief Teague. And you're welcome, by the way, for the expediency in the survey. No, I'm just kidding, a little bit, chief. But, no, it's a good thing, and I'm very, I'm very proud to be a citizen of Kaiser and be able to see the tremendous amount of work we do with very little resources here. So, thank you.
Right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Lawyer? All right. Thank you very much. Did anybody else sign up to speak? Is there anybody else who would like to share their thoughts with us tonight? We're here to listen to you. Mr. Callier, former city councillor.
Madam Mayor, city council members, thank you for the opportunity. I always wanted to grow up to be a fireman, but I became a police officer instead.
And yet, you still have a mustache.
And yet, I still have a mustache. We always appreciated, I retired from Salem in 2003, and much of my latter 15 years of my career dealt with trying to figure out ways to do more with less. I have never seen an agency do more with less than Kaiser, to the point where I fear we're going to start doing less with less. And so I'm fully in support of what we're talking about. I'm also fully in support of the parks issue also, and I appreciate that you folks have the ability to make this happen. I've had an opportunity to serve with all of you, except for councillor Reed, but I'm sure this all applies. I know that you all have the best interest in Kaiser at heart. You don't consider elections or what's best for you. You consider what's best for Kaiser, and I fully appreciate that. But we're at a situation here where, I became familiar with problem-oriented policing in the early 80s, and we started applying those principles, and we really saw it work. And what started happening in Salem is that we started growing. If you remember, Salem went from 140,000 people, 137,000 people, and we had like 135 officers. And we started growing so fast that we started eliminating the calls we would respond to, to the point where unless you went to the hospital, we didn't investigate your traffic accident. Unless it was a felony, we didn't respond to your house for a property crime, in some circumstances, like car clouts and things like that. And I don't want to see that happen here in Kaiser. We always appreciated in Salem, the quality of the folks that Kaiser hired, because we often got the opportunity to hire them away from Kaiser. And, and I'm sure that's still the case. But here we, here we sit, you know, almost 10 years later, with the same number of police officers, and an opportunity to do some really good things in Kaiser with just a few more, for, quite frankly, not a lot of money. I've had the opportunity, since I retired, I've actually been able to travel and do public safety work internationally. And I've been to communities that had 2.5, 3.5 officers per thousand, because that's always seems to be the thing, people want to know how many officers per thousand, which really makes no difference. It's the quality, not the quantity. And I've seen them do things like make sure that they get to this business to help them, escort them to the bank at 5:00 with their deposit, or, you know, those kinds of services. We don't want those kinds of services, Kaiser. We don't need those kinds of things. What we need is officers to have enough coverage out there to be safe, so that makes us safe. And so I ask you to strongly consider this. I ask you to strongly, independently, consider taking action as a council body. And remember that if you take action, for example, in November of 2018, you're not going to see an impact, probably sufficient impact, quite frankly, for another 18 months after that. And so we're talking about three years out, and I'm not sure we want to wait three years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Callier? Thank you so much. We're here to listen. Is there anybody else representative?
Madam Mayor, I said no earlier as representative post, and I'm here as bill post, just a guy who lives in Kaiser. I want to acknowledge what Chief Teague said, or I wrote it down. There's nothing more noble a cop can do than prevent crime. And that really touched me, in a way that I didn't expect tonight. For that alone, I'm in favor of this move. Nobody, probably on God's green earth, is more anti-tax than Bill Post. But you know what? We need to help. The great thing about being a resident of Kaiser is that, I hope people don't remember this, but I leave my door unlocked a lot. They're not watching, are they? But I do, because this is Kaiser. It's our hometown. And it's, so I just, I strongly encourage us to move forward on this, and thank you, Chief, and everyone else that's worked on this, our former chief, Mark Adams, and Callier, Mark Callier. And again, I just, I urge you to move on this. I think it's a great idea, and I really appreciate a moment to talk to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you so much. Floor is open. We'd love to hear from any of you who would like to, Anne.
My name is Anne Rasmussen. I know many of you. I live in the Meadows in Kaiser. And I wasn't sure if I wanted to speak, but I think this is so important. And if the scale says, "Do we put money into the parks, or do we put money into the police department?" I would say 5,000% that that money should go to the police department. We need more officers. The city does feel safe. My husband and I have a goal of visiting two states every year. We spend a year and a half, or a year and a half, a week and a half in each state. And you know immediately, if you're in an area that is not safe, you can feel it. You can see the way the store owners talk, or how they interact, or the community interacts. And Kaiser is such a wonderful city. We've lived here 25 years, and I had heard about it when we lived in Albany, but I worked in Salem. We had heard about Kaiser, about what a wonderful city it was. So when we decided to move, I said to my husband, "Let's go to Kaiser. Let's check it out." And we haven't regretted it at all. I know Chief Teague, and I knew Chief Adams. I actually volunteered for 10 years as a volunteer for the city of Kaiser, and many times went over to help the police department, where they needed some little extra help. So I know about the employees, the interactions, the hard work of many, many people. The officers have always been professional. They have always done an excellent job. I was here when Chief Stull was here, for a short time, I was here. And then Chief Adams came in, and it was like day and night. And all of you know what I'm talking about. And then Chief Teague, when he was lieutenant, he ran the evac, emergency volunteers assisting Kaiser, got that so organized. And so then, when I saw that he was going to be chief in Dallas, a bunch of us from that organization said, "Do you have to go?" But it was an opportunity for him. And then he came back, and I was so excited, because Kaiser feels like such a good community. It's a place where you want your children. It's a place where you want your families. It's a place where you want business. You want to be successful. You want to feel that it is a community. It's those things that some of us grew up as children, and that society has changed so much. So that feeling is still here in Kaiser. But I would just say that we need to get more officers out there, you know? It's well worth any kind of money that needs to be spent. And it should have been done, as far as I'm concerned, should have been done 18 years ago. But I would like to see that not be held back again. I would like to see them doing something about giving money to the police department to get more people. And like Chief Adams said, when he first came in, as a volunteer, I have seen and heard a lot of things, and I don't discuss it, because I'm not supposed to, but I do want to say that Chief Adams said, oh, maybe three, four months after he got here, he said to another manager in City Hall, "I don't know how Kaiser got by with so few police officers, and nobody has been seriously hurt or killed." And it really gave me something to think about, and I thought, even now, with the influx of drugs and those types of things, that we have more and more opportunity where something could happen. So we need more officers for public safety, for police safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Rasmussen? And thank you for all your years of volunteering.
Thank you.
All right. Microphone's open. It's not the hot seat, maybe, just the warm seat. But we would like to hear from you if you have other thoughts, encouragement, concerns. We want to hear from them. This is important for us to hear your voice. Okay. This is not going to be the last bite at it, however, because the action we take tonight, if we choose to do so, would be to direct staff to come back with an ordinance, much as we did with the parks fee. That is not the final word yet. That will come back to council for consideration and deliberation, and the plan is to have both of them on the same agenda. Because what I said at budget, I meant that this was an "and" conversation. From my point of view, I'm one of seven. Each counselor is going to make their own decision, based on what they believe is important for the community, if this is an "and" or an "or" conversation. But for me, it's an "and," and I want to make sure we consider both of those ordinances if we choose to move forward with one tonight. At the same time, there will be public testimony taken at that time as well, written and oral, if people are not comfortable coming up and sitting in front of us. And I understand that can be intimidating, beyond television, in front of a microphone. I get that. But we welcome written comments as well. Okay? Any questions? Counselor Reed.
I was just wondering if Chief Teague, if you could speak for a moment, you know, we're talking about parks and police kind of in tandem. If you could just speak for a moment about the importance of parks in your world, and how that, how they would be sort of, as far, because we've talked about priorities, we've talked about, you know, community livability, we've talked about different kinds of things. So if you could just address for a moment how they work in tandem.
Yeah, I'll come at it a little obliquely. So when I first got hired, maybe it was in a conversation before even got hired with the city manager, and he mentioned that next on the slate for hiring was a new police officer. And I suggested to him that, well, the city would be better off if we hired a code enforcement officer. Because when we have a city that's livable, and clean, and mode, that decreases crime. When we have parks that are attended to, that give people a place for spite, and that are well-cared-for, that decreases crime. So they absolutely go hand in hand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So at this point, I'd like to see if anybody would like to put a motion on the table for us to consider regarding a police fee, and then we can talk about the elements of that. And then that would be a direction to staff to put together an ordinance with these elements in mind. Council President Parsons, would you like to start?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I make a motion, I just want to say that every survey that we've done in the city of Kaiser, every year we do council goals, every year we do budget goals, public safety has been number one. So I feel this is very, very important. So I move that the Kaiser City Council direct staff to bring back an ordinance to impose the fee of $4 a month for police.
Second. Yes, I moved in second, that the Kaiser City Council direct staff to come back to the council with an ordinance for the imposition of a $4 per month per household.
And business account.
Per household and business account fee dedicated to, I'm adding a little bit here, so this is going to be with the concurrence of the mover and second, dedicated to funding police positions. Okay. Concurrents?
Concurrent, yes.
As outlined in the proposal from Chief Teague.
Yes.
Okay, I've got concurrence there. So that's the foundation of it. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The last item that Chris added, I think the flyer shows the proposed use of that.
Correct.
I would caution the council that locking yourself into an ordinance with exact positions might not be appropriate. I think that we've made a good faith effort with the public of showing what the chief's plan is. I don't know that you want to actually put that in stone in the ordinance with regard to the exact positions. That may have to change sometime.
So five positions, but not name those five. Right now, this is the plan that is, has been proposed, with the logic behind the addition of each of those positions. But we've seen policing change over time, and the need of our community may change as well. So I would concur with that, that we would not specify the positions, but specify the number of positions that would be funded.
I agree.
All right. So I would like to propose a friendly amendment, and if it's not friendly, then I will actually make the motion, and that this fee be indexed to fund five positions.
I agree. I accept.
Indexed. If the cost of those five positions goes beyond the $4 per household per month, that it be able to go up to continue to fund five positions. Inflation happens, and we've seen inflation eat up our ability to purchase the basics for our community. So you might have this much income, but the cost of, and the cost of doing something might be this, but over time, it will now only buy that. And former chief, Mark Adams, alluded to that, that we were able to buy 41 police positions, and then over time, the costs went up, and that same amount of money, or same tax base, only could fund 37. So that is my proposal, is that we index this fee.
I agree. I'll accept.
All right. Are there any other changes, concerns?
Madam Mayor? We can have discussion.
Council, city manager, and then Counselor Ryan.
Please, don't give me that promotion. Okay. I'm trying to figure, a second. I don't want, I don't want to be in a position of asking you not to give us more money. I mean, I appreciate what you're trying to do with the index, but I might suggest that you give us the ability to propose an index to you each year at the budget process, because there may be years when that's not necessary to add.
Okay.
And we can still, and I don't want to be in a position where we're taking in more fee than we need to fund the positions that you're asking us to fund.
Okay. And I think that was my intent with the indexing, that if it no longer funded the five positions, that that would come forward. But of yours proposing that this come through the budget process, not as an automatic escalator?
Not an automatic escalator, correct.
Interesting. Well, we can just, so you would like, you prefer to go through the budget process?
It seems to me, especially with a fee, that's a more transparent process, as opposed to simply an automatic indexing that the council doesn't necessarily even see, unless we point it out to you.
But the other part would be that nothing, and this would preclude the fee escalating as necessary, but that there'd be language in there to allow for that through the budget process.
Right. And I kind of echo what Chris is saying. I was anticipating doing this as actually an ordinance and resolution, similar to how we do other fees. There's an ordinance that sets forth this specific process, and the imposition of a fee, the resolution is the correct amount, similar to what we do with water rates. Although we have a water master plan with an idea of how the rates will ratchet to meet the plan, you affirmatively take action each year, depending on the situation. So I think that would work well.
So I guess maybe I'll, maybe roll back the friendly amendment to...
amend to amend.
From the...
amend the amended amendment.
Amend the amendment, more along the lines of, to allow for indexing through the budget process. Yeah, just did. Yeah. Yeah. Are we good with that?
Yes, I accept.
Okay. So, and I know Shannon's writing, and Tracy's keeping track. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's important to note, I would like to add for part of discussion base, and I'd love to hear Chief Teague add in on this if he chooses, but Chief gave us a really great factual presentation, and from his perspective as chief of police. But as a Kaiser resident, I'm a Kaiser girl lifelong. I've been a victim multiple times of crimes in Kaiser. I think it's important to note, and I have friends who have businesses locally, I think it's important to note the integrity of our police officers. It is, that's not a standard that you see in every city, and I think it's really important that we recognize that. And that's part of our hiring process, that's part of our, the great city that we have, and the leadership that we've had over time. So I don't want to take that away, but I want, what I want to make note of is that our officers have an incredible amount of compassion. You're not hearing the stories on the street of when they're helping the homeless buy a cup of coffee or a meal, or some, you know, we have a victim of a crime who, you know, they can't get their window put together, and they're in fear. You know, when you're a victim, you're in fear. And our officers have done an amazing job of comforting our citizens, and taking care and pride, and making sure they're not left alone, and that they're, you know, that they're in fear. They're always, you know, they go above and beyond anything that you hear of a basic, of course, factual presentation. I think that's really important to note. We're on I-5. We are, we have growing pains. We have a lot going on in our community, and we're seeing it every day. So I'd like to say, you know, not only do we want to support, of course, you know, our law enforcement, but as a community, we want that hometown feel. We all love being part of Kaiser and feeling safe, and, you know, it's not really, for me, this is not a pitch about money. It's a pitch about saying, you know, we're united as, you know, it takes that village. I mean, I'm a mom. How many of us here have, you know, we're raising our kids, and our families, and our grandkids, and our parks. It all matters. And so I just, you know, I just really want to reiterate the fact that what you're not hearing is that we have compassion in our officers, we have an integrity level that doesn't exist in other cities, and I know and I trust that that is going to continue to happen, no matter if we have five more, 10 more, 20 more. I'd love to see us continue to grow, but I don't want to leave off the table the importance of the human factor, and the human kindness, and the compassion and integrity of our officers, because it's extremely important, and I don't want that to go without notice. And I know you have countless stories of that, I'm sure, and I won't put anybody, I get to do a lot of ride-alongs, and let me tell you, I say I get to because of the privilege, but every single one of you can do a ride-along, and I encourage it. Just go see what our police officers are dealing with. And here's the cool thing, every homeless person, they know them by name, they know what their situation is, they know why they're there, and what they need, and did they take their medicine? And Amy, don't put them in your car. You know, I mean, they're amazing. So they, I have heard that, actually. So it's kind of funny. But I tell you that because you, as a citizen, you have the same right, and even responsibility to take a ride-along and see exactly what your community is facing, and I highly encourage it. And so, Chief, if you'd like to just take a second, I know there's a human factor there that's really important.
Well, certainly there are good cops everywhere.
No, they're only in Kaiser. No, I'm just kidding.
I will say, though, that I have enough travels across the state, and with my work at DPSST, that I get to look into other agencies, perhaps in a way that a lot of police administrators don't get to. And one thing that does cause us to stand apart as administrators at Kaiser PD is we understand the frailty of the human condition, which means we don't take draconian actions when a cop makes a mistake, which allows them the freedom to come forth and to take care of each other, and to address problems when they're little and early, so they don't become big problems later, and result in a cop losing his job or making a headline. So I think that internal compassion, if you will, leaks out into what you're seeing on the street. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Herrera?
I, what? One of the things about, I've had the pleasure, and first of all, my... One of the things about, I've had the pleasure, and first of all, I want to thank everybody that showed up. Clearly, there's a strong support for the police department, and there's good reason because, you know, my, my relationship with police has gone back.
Is this microphone on? Is your microphone on?
My relationship with the police department has been for a long time, and I really want to thank Chief Teague for what he's seen. I mean, I, what I've, what I've seen with my own eyes is some, I mean, Officer Copeland with the Blast Program, all, all the reaching out that you do that people don't see behind the scenes. One of the things I learned from the former mayor, Hood River, he used to say that, yeah, Roland, you can pretend to care, but you can't pretend to show up. And one of the things that Chief Teague did, and I really remember, I'll, I'll never forget this, although it was almost three years ago, he showed up to Light of the Valley to talk to a group of 70 Hispanic residents from Kaiser, our community. And that meant a lot to me, because he's reaching out to everybody, and I really felt like that was very important, it was a big step, and, and it, it showed a lot, because like you said, you know, he showed up, and, and we all appreciate that. And all the police officers here are very professional and very respectful. Well said. And I do, when my big travels, I, I do talk to a lot of police officers, and believe me, our, our police officers are really friendly. So I'm 100% behind this. I mean, I, I really want to thank you, Chief, and everybody, and all the former, I see former chief here, too, for the great job you've done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There's one thing I would like to address, and it was a point that Rhonda Rich brought up about an election. And I, I don't want to gloss past this, because we are moving forward with discussion of an ordinance. And I totally appreciate the voices that people have concerns, they're, they have worries in their lives about their finances, about their ability to be able to absorb an increase in costs for living in Kaiser, and also the voice of an election. I am a past president of the League of Women Voters. To me, voting and elections is an absolute sacrosanct part of having an operative democracy. The reason that I, at this point, I feel that moving forward with the ordinance is timing. It would push this out another year and a half before we could have the vote, the results, and then the money coming in. And for me, this has waited too long, and we've got to move on this. Get the money coming in, we know how it's going to be spent, we have the oversight of the elected neighbors, your neighbors, who are sitting here, who will look after how these dollars are spent. We have a credible staff and police department that we know who will be accountable to us on how these dollars are spent. If I didn't have that confidence, then I would talk about going out to an election for a more in-depth discussion. But I do not want to dismiss that, that recommendation from Rhonda, and I've heard it from some other people as well. And I just believe it is, this is just me, I'm one of seven, but I truly believe it's in the best interest of our community to move forward with this at this time, through this means. But I really appreciate her having, using her voice to speak for people who may be not comfortable, or maybe do oppose this, and I get that. There are people who do oppose moving forward with a police fee, who move, who oppose moving forward with a parks fee. We have heard from some people, and I respect their point of view. And my vote is going to be in what I believe is in the best interest of the community, but I do not pretend that I understand everybody's point of view, or that I will, I don't want, I'm going to make sure people understand, I'm not dismissing the opinions or the concerns of the people who may disagree with me. So. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I just want to, I just thank the fact that we were able to have this discussion and hear from our citizens tonight. As someone who's been, lived in Kaiser for over 27 years, that I've, that my wife and I have been married, you know, we chose to live here, we've appreciated the, this community, it's an awesome community, and I greatly appreciate the leadership of our, our police department and other officials here in, in this community to make it a great place. I know exactly what y'all were talking about with respect to the Wild West days. Unfortunately, remember them well, having been a, lived in southeast Kaiser for a few years, and I appreciate Mr. Giriloff coming in and, and providing some input there as well, and Chief Adams, as well, has just did an awesome job for this community. I really appreciated the chief's comments, opening up our discussion tonight. That was great context for what we were looking at. I also appreciate the great, and it's a modest proposal, frankly, that he's looking at, nothing too outlandish or anything, but what we need to get the job done. So that is also appreciated as well. And it's pretty reasonable for us that, in terms of what is being proposed, I really appreciated the comments that came before us tonight as well. Folks hit on a lot of great comments, and one that I will just close with, Gary Whalen, I thought, said something really good that I really appreciated, and that was that we put a lot of responsibilities on our officers, having to live across the street for one, thank goodness. And we need to give them the resources to do their jobs. And again, this is a modest proposal, but it'll, it gets done what we need to get done. And so I appreciate that, appreciate that we're look, moving this forward. And I also appreciate the fact that we are going to be examining this issue as, at the same time that we're talking about looking at the parks issue. Both critical elements, public safety, and my book is absolutely imperative in this community, and so I appreciate the discussion and moving this forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I had to laugh a little bit about, you know, Chief Teague was gearing up for, you know, more in-depth conversation with the community about this, figured it'd need more time and so forth. Do you get the impression that people are very interested in this right now? So I think that the fact that all you all came tonight, people have responded on Facebook, people have written letters, clearly, and as Council President Parsons said, this is what we hear about every year on our survey, when we do our citizen survey, is about safety in our community. And, you know, taking the bold step to have the conversation, all of us, about doing funding a different way, because our property taxes can, our base cannot be raised. Measure 50 took care of that. We cannot raise our tax base. We just can't. That's in the state constitution. We're stuck. So we could do rolling levies every five years, come back to the voters, and ask again, can we do this again? Can we do this again? Or we can choose to tax ourselves through a fee structure. And that is the conversation we are having. It's a conversation that the parks folks really help lead out with, talking about a parks fee, what does that look like, how do we implement? And as I, I want to reassure everybody, this is not the last bite at it. This will come to council, we will have public hearings on, on any ordinance that comes forward, and resolution. And we will also then continue to have this come through the budget process each year. 14 members of our community allocating the dollars, our dollars, for our use and our services. So I just want to make sure that's very clear. This is not something that's going to disappear, and yeah, we'll just take care of it, don't worry about it. Oh, no, we're all in this together. All right. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And a minor item on the dollars and cents, I'm sorry, I meant to bring it up a little earlier, that I think the motion was $4 per month, and I was glancing through here, and there was no $4 a month, it was $44 a year, which is, of course, a little less than $4 a month. So I didn't know precise, how precise, I just want to confirm you wanted to do $4 a month, and not $3.66 a month, so that's all.
Oh.
Yes?
I'm having an index.
Really? I'm, I'm fine with either way. Round amounts are good.
Round numbers are, are good, and something tells me that maybe we can expand our capacity for blast camp.
There you go.
I mean, there are, there are ways that these dollars can be used very responsibly, in terms of training, resources, and I'm sure that the chief and the city manager will come back to us if there's opportunities for us to use these dollars in conjunction with the priorities that we already have. And we could also do an up to, if we want to, up to $4 at this point for the five positions. But I've also heard about startup costs in terms of these, these positions. So I would rather leave it at $4 at this point, and if the city manager comes back with a recommendation that it be a lower number to get this started, then I believe we could entertain that. Any further comments on that?
Still have a motion?
We still have the motion on the table, as amended a few times. Does Amy need it read, read back? Counselor Freeman?
I don't need it read back, but I do want to make a comment. I just want to thank the families that are out here, and some of our other police staff that's in the audience. You're here on your own time, and I think that is crucial. I know we have at least one set of parents out there of a police officer. There may be some others that I'm not aware of, and I also want to thank people that I've not seen in this audience before for attending tonight. And I hope that this is not the only time that you will grace your presence in the council chambers, because a lot of times on these evenings, there is no one in the audience. I'm sure we have many people watching us at home, which we are greatly appreciative, but it's very nice to have everyone here, and thank you for your comments. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Counselor Reed.
I just want to add, to add really quickly, a, a big thank you to all the vendors who put this announcement on their reader boards, Up and Down River, just going Up and Down River, and McNary, and the Fire Department, and this message is everywhere. And so, you know, that, to me, spoke volumes in terms of the support that we have for our police. So thank you to our business communities as well, and churches, and schools, and everybody else who helped to get the word out.
All right. Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Are we ready for the vote? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That is the main item on the agenda. Do we have anything else for the good of the order? Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And speaking of surveys, the city survey is on the website, so please take a few moments of your time and go to the city website, Kaiser.org, and click on, and take the survey. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We will meet in regular session next Monday night at 7:00. All right, we are adjourned.